A moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, particularly for former President Jimmy Carter, who passed away recently. Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas.
Happy New Year here, everybody.
Ms. Krishnawski. Mr. Lescavage. Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Attorney skin, would you please announce the executive session?
This evening before this session, we had an executive session to discuss personnel matters, one union contract, and one new employee.
Alright, thank you very much. We have no recognitions or ceremonial proclamations. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda? Any deletions? Alright, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the voting session agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Will not have public comment on voting session agenda items only. I do have one slip. Mr. Griffith?
Good evening, counsel. Agenda items I want to address with counsel this evening is item number one on the agenda regarding the collective bargaining agreement for the Detectives Association. If this passes, I would like to have someone give the public a synopsis of what was in the contract. I know we can't divulge that prior to voting. And if it does pass, if we would get a synopsis for the people to find out what the particulars are as best you can in a summary form, that would be great. So the people could possibly comment at the end if they'd like to. Item number two on the agenda is the motion to adopt a resolution confirming appointment of a Director of Human Services. I don't know if that should say Division Head of Human Services or not, but in any case, I just wanted to say that the person who's chosen for this position, I've had the good pleasure to be able to work with, excuse me, work with for the last couple of months when we did the time and attendance and payroll conversion. She was in a different role, obviously, but very, very enthusiastic employee. I think she'll do really well for us as a Division Head, as the Human Services Division Head. I think she has the ability to get the job done. She certainly has the energy, and she's very responsive to me as the Controller when we were doing the payroll conversion. So I don't think we're going to have a bad choice there at all. I think she's going to be very, very good for the county in that role. Strongly encourage counsel to approve that appointment. And the other item is item number 12, is the nominations and appointments to authorities, boards, and commissions. I'm in full support of Scott Lindy. As we all know, the issues that we ran into with the $55 million loan for the bridge and some other things that went through redevelopment authority, he was very instrumental in that. So I would encourage counsel to keep him on there. A little bit disappointed that Mark Raybo did not apply for that position. I think it's going to be sorely missed. That's a resource that just can't be replaced, and it's unfortunate that we don't have the opportunity to appoint him to one of the other positions, but obviously, he has time constraints and he couldn't do it, and that's unfortunate. But as Control, I would definitely want to thank him for his service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items only? Mr. Griffin?
And I would just request that...
And how the event went.
If I can say something?
For the minutes of the December 17th, 2024 voting session. For the minutes of the December 17th, 2024 voting session.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And people that we want to retain and not lose. However, I can't support this bargain.
Alright, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, to table.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
You have 10 yes and one no.
Okay, thank you. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of a Director of Human Services?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We do have to make a motion with the name correct, or is it filled in already on the paper?
Yeah, for the public's sake, we can name and salary also?
Yep.
So who made the motion?
Well, I'd like to nominate Megan Stone at the salary of $98,000 to be the Division Head of Human Services.
Alright, and there's a second. Your second stands. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for common ground ministries.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Luzerne County Convention Center.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Shikshini Borough.
Second.
Motion and a second.
On the question?
Go ahead.
Where are these funds being moved? And what are they being used to pay for? Do we know?
I believe this is...
Miss Berish, would you like to expand on this? I think it's an extension, I think. Right.
I think it was sewer work, wasn't it?
It would have been in the attachments. There should have been a budget summary, and I don't see one. Well, Shikshini is just requesting a period of performance extension, so they're not doing anything to the budget.
I think a detailed description was provided to all of counsel with...
The project is called the Chestnut Street Roadway and Drainage Improvement Project, so they're not changing anything in the original project that was approved by counsel. They're just requesting an extension to their end date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Miss Berish, is Attorney Youngblood the contact on this?
There were four people who were going to be on for Shikshini, and Attorney Youngblood was one of them, yes.
Okay, he's on and he has his hand raised. Is it okay if we ask if he wants to expand on that? Attorney Youngblood, can you hear us? You can unmute yourself. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'll be brief. I understand there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight, but there's been some cost issues and rescopes because of additional funding procurement falling through for Shikshini Borough. So that's just what I would just briefly add in support of Shikshini Borough's request for additional time.
So...
And let, go ahead.
So I just have a question. Like Ms. Smith asked, you know, so there's, are there cost differences, or is it a time extension?
It's a time extension, however, part of the reason for the time extension is due to cost issues regarding unrelated to the ARPA grants.
So does that affect anything that's happening with the ARPA money and the line items that it's currently in your project?
Other than deadlines, no. We just essentially need the deadlines extended.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that's itemized in the report, the rap given to booth management.
Right, correct. Okay, alright, alright, thank you, Attorney Youngblood. Miss Berish, you don't have anything else, do you?
No.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Alright, there was a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski? Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Sugar Notch Borough.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number seven, introduction of ordinance amending the 2024 general fund budget for Luzerne County for the Election Integrity Grant. Manager Crocomo.
I will be introducing this ordinance to amend the 2024 general fund budget for the Election Integrity Grant. At the end of 2023, the Election Integrity Grant cash account was less payments in transit, and it had $562,202 remaining from a 23-24 grant funds that should have been factored into 2024 budget. This amendment would rectify that in ballots between the total cash available and the 2024 budget, allowing the additional funds to be spent on the remaining 2024 invoices. I have representatives of the Election Department here, and Mary Rozell as well, if there are any questions.
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thanks, Mel. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure absolutely no outstanding invoices incurred in 2024. Can the election staff just assure us of that?
Well, we did incur invoices in 2024.
Right.
And when we received the grant, we received the monies in September, so we used them for the general election, and then the remaining amount we used for the primary.
Right.
So we did incur invoices in 2024, so, and we'll be incurring invoices in 2025, which is in that time period for the grant.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's the exact number, that we're not going to be surprised with anything. That is what it is. Thanks.
Ms. Smith?
What? Can you characterize some of the invoices? For example, are they for one-time things, or are they maintenance? Like an ongoing support contract?
No. Walter, can you press the button?
No, I got it. I got it. So the way the Election Integrity Grant works is that the grant runs from September of one year until August of the next year. Okay, so we're increasing revenue and expenses by the same amount. We're not increasing the budget at all, until, like, we're increasing the revenue and we're increasing the expenses. So the invoices that Emily still has to be paid are things like the Dominion invoice. I think there were some invoices for printing. There were some invoices for, I think, moving some of the equipment. So there are things that are identified as being able to be applied against that integrity grant, which we want to do. We want to apply as much as possible against the integrity grant, which of course frees up the money in the general fund.
Here's the question. Here's what I'm asking. According to Act 88, so when I read this, I read through Act 88, and I read through the grant pages, and in fear of losing this grant, for example, it specifically says that funding to pay periodic maintenance fees on a standard ongoing support contract are not eligible. So I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in jeopardy, and none of those contracts are maintenance fees.
They are not.
They're all individual invoices for one thing.
And I have to say that we go through each and every invoice. Emily and her staff does a great job of going through those invoices and reading those requirements specifically, and even going over them with us to make sure we all agree that they can absolutely be applied to the grant. So she checks each and every one of them, and there was nothing that is maintenance-related.
Okay, alright, thank you, because this is just vague, the 2024 voices.
Sure, I understand.
So I wanted to make sure, invoices, I wanted to make sure that they were all applicable to the grant. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Ms. Rozell. Alright, moving on. Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution approving the reimbursement of expenses associated with the tenants at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Conference for Ms. Stevenson.
So, second.
So motion and a second.
On the question, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I brought this up last, I guess it was the last meeting, in the fall, and my issue was that this was not done according to the charter, and I referenced Charter Section 2.05D. And, you know, Brittany, I love you, this has nothing to do with you whatsoever, but it's just the proper protocol to follow, and so we look at this.
Can you read what it says?
Sure, I'm going to read again for the advocacy of the public and for my colleagues here. It's for this section, it says, "However, members of county council shall be entitled to reimbursement of travel expenses to and from all regular special meetings of county council," right, meaning special meetings, that's here in council chambers, "and keeping with county policy shall also be entitled to reimbursement of expenses incurred when their duties require they travel outside of Luzerne County." Okay, so the CCAP conference was outside Luzerne County, provided such expenses have been previously adopted by county council and are in keeping with county policy. So in the past, the past practice, those of us who went, we had prior approval, and I mentioned this before, that when I was very young on council, and I went to a conference, and I said, "Hey, can you reimburse me with this?" It was denied because it was brought, it was against the charter. So I just want to make sure that we're, we, as Brian Thoron said, are the fiduciary of Luzerne County. We have to hold ourselves to the same standard that we would hold management or any other department here, so I would just encourage that we vote this down, unfortunately. I think going forward, I suggested we put $2,000 in the budget for such trips for any of us to go, because I thought it is a valuable thing, like Mr. Griffin said out there. It's a very valuable thing. And we've gone in the past, we have reported back to councils, so thank everybody who went, and Brittany for going too, but this is, to approve this would be a violation.
Attorney skin?
I would disagree with that reading. I think, given that she was put on the CCAP team, it would be expected that she would be going to the meetings. Thereby, it would be expected that counsel would be paying back her expenses.
That is what my understanding of the charter was, and after consulting with the Office of Law, I kind of agreed with that. And it's not just that she's an attendee at CCAP, she's a voting member. So, you know, I apologize that that happened to you in the past. Maybe that was a misreading of the charter at that time. I think maybe this is something that is a little bit nebulous, so Government Study Commission, if you're listening, this might be something to look at. But, I mean, is this in keeping with policy, Manager Crocomo, that you're aware of?
Yes, the method that was used for Councilwoman Stevenson, yes.
Okay.
She was appointed to be the voting member. You have to attend to vote.
Okay.
No, the voting actually takes place this new year. That was not a voting meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, they vote on...
It was a voting meeting.
Yeah. Oh, it was a voting meeting. As a matter of fact, before council members were put on, I was at a CCAP meeting. I don't have voting privileges, so I had to leave the room. And I came back, and I said, "We need people to vote at CCAP," and that resolution was adopted.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at the reen, Mr. Chair, it's just very clear, very clear. Again, we have, if we're going to hold everybody else to the same standard, we've got to follow the same standard we're holding everybody else to, and we're not doing that. You vote for this.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Haas', Councilman Haas' issue with this. Given that the Office of Law has a different opinion, I say yes to this, and I'm happy that she got to go and be a voting member.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
As a voting member as well, you know, I think we were bestowed that, we were sent to vote, so I believe yes, we should be reimbursed, so yes.
Mr. Haas?
I'm glad Brittany and everybody else went as well, but it wasn't in the budget, and this council not follow proper charter protocol. No.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
As a voting member, yes, but I think we need to make sure in the future, just to be able to ask.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
10 yes, 1 no, it passes.
Thank you. Number nine...
Mr. Chair, could I make a suggestion? In the future, if there's any more such meetings this year, in this fiscal year, maybe at a future meeting, maybe the next meeting, we could have a motion on there to allocate some portion of some money to pre-approve those excursions.
We do have money budgeted in a line item for this year for that exact purpose. I think that some of the confusion was that there was not any money budgeted in last year's budget for the same line item.
Okay.
Right, because nobody attended.
Right.
Nobody, nobody attended, but it is in the budget this year. There is a meeting in March. It's a legislative meeting.
Okay. Alright, and those meetings are also posted, and we know about all of them. You know about all of them, just as the public knows about the council meetings, same situation. Now, I know most council members typically don't ask for reimbursement to come from their houses to here, you know, so. Right, right. Anyway, number nine, motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration. This is Ms. Williams, who has resigned as Chair of the Election Board.
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. On the question, anybody? Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yep.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Number 10, motion to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne County Board of Tax Assessment and Appeals for Mr. Bard.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 11, motion to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne County Industrial Development Authority due to the resignation of Mr. Kaiser.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Thank you, and before we go any further, I just wanted to thank all those individuals who we just declared their vacancies for their service on the various boards and authorities that they were on. They've done a great job, and even if we didn't agree on some things, you know, there was a level of professionalism by all of them that I think should be commended. Number 12, nominations and appointments to authorities. First, we have the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority. We have one opening with the term ending in 2029. I'd like to open nominations for that authority.
Motion open. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open. Anybody have any nominations?
Yes, I nominate Mr. John Mayday.
Second.
Alright.
Motion to close nominations.
Alright, there's a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We'll have the resolution for Mr. Mayday. Yeah, is there a motion?
Motion to pass that resolution appointing Mr. Mayday to the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Alright, 12B, Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority. We have two openings with terms ending also in December of 2029. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion open nominations. Second.
Alright, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Scott Lindy.
Mr. Who?
Mr. Scott Lindy.
Is there a second for Mr. Lindy?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Eric Liskowski.
Second.
Mr. Liskowski? There's a second.
Motion to close.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. Alright, there's two for two, so we will have the resolution for Mr. Lindy first. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we'll have the resolution for Mr. Liskowski. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd just like to reach out and thank Mark Raybo for his many years of service and time, an enormous amount of time on the redevelopment authority, and he was a wonderful addition and asset to the authority and to the county, so thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you. I'd like to echo those sentiments as well. I have heard many good things about him on that authority. I've talked to some people that interact with it quite frequently, and they have respected his opinion on a number of items.
Mr. Chair, I'd also echo the same thing. Mark has been, you know, a great asset to all of us through all the time he was here.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number 13, nominations and appointments to boards and commissions. 13A, we have the Luzerne Conservation District Board of Directors.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like a motion to nominate Mr. Gary Moyer.
Second.
Motion and a second for Mr. Moyer. Motion to close, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are closed. We'll have the resolution for Mr. Moyer. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, who was first on the motion? Greg? Okay, all right, Greg was first on the motion, and I don't know who was second either. Jimmy? Okay. Okay. Roll call?
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I would just like to thank Mr. Jack Hanish for his many years of service on the Conservation District. He's most recently been the Vice Chair, and he's gone to so many meetings, and he's contributed a lot to our organization. I'd sincerely like to thank him for his service.
Thank you. Next, we have the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission. We have one term ending in 2028.
Motion to open nominations.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Jay.
Mr. Noda Tomaso?
Yes, please.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. See, that's not a Polish name. I can pronounce that one. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other not, well, there's only.
Motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are closed. We'll now have the resolution for Mr. Noda Tomaso.
I'd like to nominate Jay Noda Tomaso for the.
The resolution. You have the.
So moved.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, next, we have Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board with three terms ending in 2028.
Motion open nominations.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Donald Armstrong.
I nominate Brian Gill.
Is there a second on Mr. Armstrong? Okay, second on Mr. Armstrong, and it was Lee, Ms. McDermott. All right, Ms. Stevenson, you said Mr. Gill?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second on Mr. Gill.
I nominate Michelle Millington.
Second.
Okay, there's a.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, resolution for Ms. Millington.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we have the Luzerne County Farmland Preservation Board. We have three terms ending in 2027.
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate John Lucas.
Second.
Motion and a second for Mr. Lucas. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Linda Toma.
Second.
Motion and a second for Ms. Toma.
I'd like to nominate Richard Yost.
Second.
Motion and a second for Mr. Yost. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Okay, there's, I'm sorry that we're going so fast. There's a mo, it was, yeah, it was Mr. Sabatino, Mr. Wilovich. Okay.
I got that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, nominations are closed. We'll do these in order as well. First, we will have the resolution for Mr. Lucas.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Yost? Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, next, we have the.
I second Mr. McDermott's.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Roll call. Sorry, Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, next up, we'll have the resolution for Mr. Stanford.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Finally, we have the Luzerne County Planning Commission with one term ending in 2028.
Motion open.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Carl Nessig.
One for Mr. Nessig.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, there was a motion. There's already a second by Mr. Wilovich, I think.
And a motion to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We'll have the resolution for Mr. Nessig.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, we'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. These things go very quickly. Sometimes a little bit who's on first. Somebody else made that joke out there. That was funny. Can we revisit 12B for a moment? The application of Scott Lindy, I had, I had meant to bring this up earlier, and it just flew by. He noted on his application questionnaire that he, as an individual or business you own and or manage to serve as a contractor to Luzerne County or to any Luzerne County Authority Board or Commission, and he said only through public bidding. He also said to, are you employed or compensated by any individual or business serving as a contractor to Luzerne County or to any county authority or board or commission, and he said only through public bidding. Now, that obviously doesn't mean he is directly, but he could, he could bid on that project and win a project and then be compensated in that way. And I just wanted to make sure with the Office of Law that there's no conflict there.
That complies with the charter. That's, that's one of the issues with the, the authorities are different than boards and commissions and authorities when we had that previous.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Good, good, good catch. Okay, and also, before we, before we go into public comment, I just wanted to specify something that I did earlier in the meeting where I voted no on the tabling of number one. It wasn't necessarily because of, I disagreed with my fellow council members. It was because I believe that tabling that will make this a little bit more complicated to return to us when we eventually do return to it if there is some type of renegotiated contract. So we'll have to figure that out in the future when it comes back to us. Anyway, well, now, public comment. I have, on non-agenda items, I have Mr. Darto.
Good evening, council, and my fellow citizens of Luzerne County. I'm here today because I'm very concerned, along with the taxpayer, for an article I was writing on January 7th. And I would like Councilman Jamie Sabatino to clarify as to why he feel it would be necessary to raise taxes for the citizen of this county. You said it was going to go to 3%.
Mr. Darto, you have to address all of your comments through the Chair of Council, so if you are addressing him directly, you cannot do that. You have to.
It was in, it was in a public newspaper.
That is, that is, I'm talking about a rule of decorum. I'm not talking about, you can, you can say, Mr. Sabatino wrote this, Mr. Chair. I would appreciate it if Mr. Sabatino would explain it. You cannot say, Mr. Sabatino, would you please explain it?
That's. I'm fighting, I'm fighting on behalf of the taxpayer, and we are very concerned because, as we all know, that we have so many high taxes within this county, and there are folks who are unable. No matter what, if you were to raise it to 3% and every year increase by 1%, as I said, you're poking it. It's like you grab a balloon and you poke the balloon. What do you think is going to happen? You're breaking into the pockets of the city and citizen who is on fixed income. So why now we all get together and start lowering taxes for the people instead of trying to jack it up or try to figure a way how we can dig into the pocket? Where is the money going to go? We have fill roles in this county. Our infrastructure is, is a mess. So why are we continuing to oppress the people? That's what we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darto.
Mr. Chair, just a brief comment, please.
Go ahead.
I, I believe Mr. Darto's comments were in response to one individual council member who wrote a piece in a local newspaper, but I, I don't think any of these other council members sitting here have advocated for any kind of tax increase next year or the year after, at least not at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I, I don't know, Mr. Sabatino, you don't have to respond if you don't want to. I know he asked you to. It's.
I think the article was pretty clear. I think we need to reinvest in our workforce. I think that a 1% increase to cover the costs of raises to keep our workforce competitive is not out of the realm of possibilities. I understand that, you know, school board taxes and, and the school taxes are killing all of us at this point, but I think that we have a responsibility to the people that work for this county to make sure that our wages are competitive, to keep the certain level of service at where it's at. So I think a nominal 1% increase for three years just to cover that until we can get to 2029 where we have extra money in our budget because we only have half of a debt service payment. To keep good people working and to take care of our residents through the services that are provided by the county by these people, I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility to ask and to start a conversation about that. Maybe down the road, we could talk about a half a percent if, if there are lourdes that are expiring and, and things like, of that nature coming down the pipe. I know Mr. Griffith has, you know, Griffin, I'm sorry, Walter, Griffin, has talked about, you know, asking people who are applying for lourdes to put in for, to have, help us out with housing. And those are all great ideas, but we have to start a conversation somewhere, and that piece was meant to start a conversation.
Mr. Darto, you're, you're, please.
Thank you.
You had your time. All right, thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Greg Griffin, Swarzville. Councilman Sabatino, it was, it's courageous to, to suggest a 3% tax increase. However, you're not up for reelection for four more years, but there are five council members that are up for reelection, and it was good that, you know, Mr. Thornton had said that he, he's not aware of anyone that approves of it yet. But we would probably want to know from all the five candidates before May election whether or not they support a 1% for three years. And, you know, Councilman Sabatino, he, in his article, he said it's a modest reinvestment. It's a temporary measure. This isn't forever. It's not about burdening the taxpayers. Really? It's not revocable. It's not, it is, it's not temporary. It's permanent. It's a 3% over three, 1% over three years. But, you know, listen, I, I never suggest something without a solution. So we have a legislative committee that hasn't, I think, met since 2021, and your members are, the council members are on it. And on the minutes of 20, 2021 election committee, you talk about meeting senators and elected officials. So another sources of money is not to go and beat, beat the backs of the citizens. It's, it's to go federal and state. We, we just got Republican congressmen, and, you know, I have to give it to Mayor Brown. He, he knows what's going on. He was right here, feet away from us a couple days ago, and he's a Democrat. I saw him many times take a big check from Congressman Cartwright to help Wilkes-Barre. Mayor Brown was the first one at the microphone congratulating Congressman Burdenhan. That was fantastic, but Mayor Brown's smart. He knows there's money to be had from, from Washington. We have to get our state reps, Jamie Walsh, Pew, we have to get McCormick, Musser, Eddie DeBrizinski, Haddock. The legislative committee's got to sit down with them and say, hey, bring that money back from Harrisburg. Bring that money back from Washington. Not a 3% tax on the citizens. So this is a new source of revenue. Mayor Brown's very smart. He was the first one at the microphone congratulating a Republican. Isn't that incredible? But he knows, he knows the checks could be coming to Wilkes-Barre. Why don't some checks from Washington and Harrisburg come to Luzerne County? Why do we have to tax these people and go to the well continually? We have senior citizens. The roofs are leaking. It's incredible what these citizens are suffering from. And, you know, I just, you know, I just, somebody who's not up for reelection for almost four years, I think it's a floater. Somebody, in my opinion, someone put the councilman up to it.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
And just stay tuned. We're going to be on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, since we're on the subject of county taxes.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody that council just passed a month ago a 0% tax increase for the county for the upcoming year. This is in light of many, many school districts passing 6, 7, 8, 10% tax increase. We voted for 0% tax increase on the people. A year ago, we voted for 0% tax increase. Two years in a row, 0%. And that's in spite of the massive inflation we experienced here with county purchases with all of our. So we did do zero the last two years. My first year on council, we passed a 2.99% three years ago, and I voted against that. But, and I know Mr. Lescavage voted against that, but it's not like we're sitting here raising taxes every year to the point where, Mr. Griffin, I respectfully, I, I understand your request. You'd like some kind of statement before the May election this year. The, the possibility of a tax stagnation or increase is never known in any governing body till they're presented with the budget from the administration, which cannot happen mathematically, can't happen till at the very end of this year that we're in now. So we'll know in the fall of this year what the numbers look like at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Hartman.
Elizabeth Hartman, Hanover Township. Not to beat a dead horse, but I'm here about the tax increase. I understand it was one person. I'd like the Chair to explain. It is just one person. This is not council speaking, and also to ask Mr. Sabatino if he was forced to do this from somebody else, because that's what the rumors are out on the street, is that somebody put this in his head to do it. And like, I want to make sure that this is him on his own doing what he's doing or trying to do.
Ms. Hartman, at the bottom of the op-ed on the Times Leader website, it said one council member's name, Mr. Sabatino. He was the only one who signed his name to that letter. He's the only one, as far as I'm aware, that's, that, that agrees with that, or that has publicly said that that's what they agree with. County council, all 11 of us, one of the advantages of having 11 people here is that we have a very diverse set of opinions. And I have no problem with a council member expressing their opinions, whether I agree with them or not. So, he's only one council member. The rest of council did not sign on to this. If they did, then we would have had to pass something publicly saying, we support a tax increase coming this year. We have not done that. I, I don't imagine we're going to do that anytime soon because even if, you know, Manager Crocamo came to us with a budget that required a tax increase, we would have no way of knowing that, as Mr. Thornton said, until budget time, which is not until the early fall. So, you know, we work every single day to save as much money as we possibly can for the taxpayers. You know, I know Mr. Thornton referenced the, the 2.9% tax increase that we had in 2022. There are several council members sitting here who worked very hard to get that tax increase down from what it was, which was 7%, which a previous manager, that many people in this audience supported, by the way, proposed. So, we are trying our best every single day to save money. We are speaking to our legislators. You may not see it every day. Some of us may call them individually. I know that I called them the moment that I became Sheriff of Council, a number of them called me. The first question they asked is, John, what can I do for you to make council work a little better? And I said, we need more money for X, Y, and Z. And if anybody would like to talk to me about that, I'm happy to talk to you. But that's one of the very first things that I asked. And I know that's what other council members do all the time. We've gotten a number of, of road projects done because of federal and state dollars. Congressman Muser has been extremely helpful when it comes to that. Locally, we've had some, some great successes with our other previous state, state reps and state senators. So, every single day, I promise you, I think every single one of us can promise you that we are trying our best to make sure that we're not overburdening the taxpayers. But I think it was very important what Mr. Sabatino did say earlier, is that, you know, the school districts are really, really, who are causing the, the main portion of this burden right now. My time is up.
And your time is up.
But, but in truth.
But, but I, like, I know how hard when it's budget time, like, all the heads work to keep everything under budget and keep everything down so we don't have to do that. You know what I mean? So, I know myself, like, my taxes are through the roof. And I really, I can't afford a 1%, I can't. Like, I'm, I'm Robin Peter to pay Paul now, you know? So, I'm just keeping my head above water.
Understood.
And that's why I came today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hartman. Mr. Sabatino?
Nobody put me up to this. This is 100% me. Mr. Fitzgerald knows that I've been saying this for a long, long time. I just put it in, put my thoughts into the world to start the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you. We need to look at other counties when we talk about tax increases in reference to Luzerne County. And I'm not advocating for a tax increase, for sure. I think we need to make sure we're as trim as we can, work as tight as we can with our budget to make sure we're being as efficient as we can with our dollars. But, I was very interested to see that tomorrow night, the Government Study Commission has an item on their agenda to regulate how they're going to give salaries to elected officials. And I was really interested to see how Lackawanna County gives every elected official in the county, and they have probably 15, a 4% raise every single year. 4% every single year is written right in their thing. We have 11 council members. It would be great to give a 4% raise to every member of council. Public would be outraged, totally outraged. So, keep that in mind when we think about a 55% increase in Lackawanna, or 33% increase in Lackawanna County. Keep that in mind in what they're doing with their budget. Read their budget someday. It will spin your head around when you see some of the numbers are given to their people up there for salaries. Not that I'm advocating for a tax increase. I'm just saying we need to be fairer with our employees. We have a lot of employees not making more than minimum wage around here for realistic purposes. And then we have people at the top that are making huge amounts of money. So, we need to be realistic in what we're talking about. But my issue here tonight is about the Home Rule, the council not doing their job accordingly. We have a Home Rule Charter that mandates, requires. Mr. Haas raised an issue about not having the Home Rule Charter violated. We haven't had codification done here in 10 years. I don't hear a single word from 11 people, not one word. But have a council member go out and spend $200 on her own to get reimbursed. Now, the sky is falling, we got to violate the Charter. Oh, my goodness, what are we doing? But we won't follow the Charter. There's a lot of things in our Charter that we are required to do. Nobody says a word. Council is a legislative body for position budgets. When, when, not that I'm saying that Ms. Stone is not worth the money. Our position budget says that's a $92,000 salary. When Jen Pacora came here, Mr. Haas raised all kinds of crap about the fact that we weren't following the position budget. We just gave a $98,000 salary to somebody with a $92,000 number in the position budget. Not a word, not a word. I'm not saying that we shouldn't give her 98, she's worth every dime of it. But if we're going to stand on the slope of following the rules, let's follow the rules. Let's not jump in when it's convenient to make us stink, when it looks good politically, or whatever way. If we're going to a conference, or you want to pay for your gas and mileage, that's an acceptable expense. Why are we having a problem with a lousy 200 bucks, but we're not worried about 4,000? So, let's keep that in mind. The issue I have with the Matt Vogue issue, Nick Vogue, I'll finish up. Nick Vogue's issue was personnel is mandated by HR. That application should have never went no further than the HR's office. How it got from HR to the manager, I have no idea. But that was clearly a violation of administrative code. Should have been fixed before it even went there. And who's on the Administrative Code Review Committee? Who's the chair? Mr. Haas. When did we meet last? Four years ago.
All right, thank.
Four years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
So, let's keep things in perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Just, just to clarify or expand upon two things he said. We did, you know, we did inquire about the, the difference in the position budget. Or, I know, at least I did inquire. I know other council members may have had the same question about the position budget. I spoke to Manager Crocamo, and if you'd like to explain it, that's fine.
It was an error on the position budget. And we have followed up with the individual in the county who formulated that. And we do have monies in the budget to make the $98,000. But the 92 was an absolute error.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo. And one other thing that Mr. Griffith alluded to, he mentioned going and reading Lackawanna County's budget, and you'll be very surprised at what you see. But, the members of the public have access to Luzerne County's budget as well. You can go and read that document, and you can read every single line item, what we pass, what we spend on every single thing. So, if you have suggestions on where we can be saving money and how we can be streamlining, we're always willing to, to listen to that. Somebody just posted my phone number, my personal phone number, on Facebook earlier this week. So, I'm happy to receive any phone calls or, you know, an email. And I think the rest of council is pretty willing to listen to that as well. So, I'm, you know, I, I think that, that we can all work together if we really want to make things a little bit better. But, it, you know, I, I like that Mr. Griffin came up and at least had a solution to propose. So, understandably, like I said, we've, we've really been trying to do that. But if, if the members of the public would like to see what we're spending money on, you can always access our budget at any time, and you can ask us any questions you want about it because we normally go through it pretty, pretty significantly.
And that's on the county website, correct?
Yeah, that's right. Okay. I have no other slips. I have, oh, go ahead. Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald, yeah.
Just so you know, Jimmy, I met him at his pizza place during a lunch one time. And I, I respect Jimmy very much. I think our policies, we differ on policies, but yet he's always there to voice his opinion. And thank God we have that. That's the First Amendment, and we all have differences. So, I do respect your, that you have an opinion, you have every right for that. We could disagree. I know you think I'm a little kooky, I think you're a little kooky, but oh, well. I do care about you, okay? You're a good man. I do, I would like people to call Vivek Ramaswamy and Elon Musk to bring Dodge into here. So, this week, it's a joke. But what we could do is, I, I think what John said too, is we, we could get together, if we're giving raises like Walter, I think that was ridiculous, and bonuses. When the people are suffering, it's a smack in the eye to give someone a bonus. It is, it's disgusting. When we have people losing their homes, we have to find other ways. We do have to find other ways, whether it's fundraising or whatever. We have a lot of intelligent people here. But until the people on the bottom level get raises, the top people should not get them. That's how I feel, just like you feel your way. That's how I feel, okay? I didn't come up here for that, it just came sideways. So, I have two other things real quick. I want to invite every Republican running for office in this, I'm having an event on March 19th at 6:00 PM at Wilkes-Barre Township Fire Hall for petition signings. That's for council, school boards, and Controller. And also, any judges, Democrat or Republican, come because.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you mean February 19th? Because that's during petition period. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, February 19th, the day after.
Okay, you said March.
I apologize. Thank you. February 19th, the day after you're allowed to do petitions. You'll be able to tell why we should sign your petitions, and we'll have boots. I'm going to, we're going to try to support that. But again, judges, doesn't matter because they cross file, so I want to be as fair as I can. And then the last thing is, I understand that being a bail bondsman and going into the jail, the jail's been really well-run since the new Warden came in. We haven't heard any, any, any major catastrophes. And I really got to thank Mr. Warden Wilber in this case. And I understand that the deputy Warden's position's up for hire.
Since Mr. Wilber has taken over the prison, it has been extremely successful. Things have been really going in the right direction. And there's been a lot of cost savings too. That's something that I'm not sure has been noted quite frequently here, or has, or has been, has been recognized as much as it should be. But there has been a lot of cost savings too. Okay. All right, we have, we have three, anybody else in the audience for public comment? We have three people on the Zoom. First, we have Mr. Granteed. Mr. Granteed, you can unmute yourself. Mr. Granteed? You're unmuted on our end, you can, you can unmute yourself on your end. Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll come back to you, Mr. Granteed. I don't know if you're having an issue. If you want to send a message in the chat, we'll try to resolve it for you if it's something on our end. Next up, we have Mr. Carr. Mr. Carr, you're unmuted, you can, you can speak. Is there?
Hello, John?
Oh, there you go, Mr. Carr, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Jason Carr, Salishburg, Pennsylvania. Earlier in the week, I was reading an article in the Times Leader by Jennifer Andes. And I was wondering if you can clarify for the, the public, why did the county manager give a, a secret $25 or $20,000 salary increase to Mary Rozelle? I guess according to the article, she informed council, but none of you disclosed it to the public, nor did the county manager. Can you explain why, why that was done? As well, I've been told that Mary Rozelle's boyfriend has been hired, or was hired, in the Road and Bridge Department by Luzerne County. Does that violate any nepotism policy within the county? And I understand Brian, Brian Thornton was a major factor in having him hired because he's from West Pittston. Are any of those rumors true?
No.
Can you clarify any of this for us?
No, that's not true.
And what's going on? What, why, why are there so many secrets regarding all this money being given to people?
Go back and forth, so you lose time. So, if you have any further comments, we're happy to.
I don't want to go back and forth with you either. I'm just, I just want explanations. And I think, I think that the people of Luzerne County want explanation, explanations as to what is going on with all this money being thrown around, why it was.
Would you like to respond to any of that?
I followed the Charter and notifying council that, and during the budget and the position budget, it was, it was noted. The salaries were noted. There's nothing that's going on secretly. I can, I could actually do my job as my predecessor did and not share information with council, the public, or the Controller. The chair was absolutely correct that the people in this audience who are accusing me of not being transparent are the people who advocated, people who had demonstrations in front of the Brminske Building because they didn't want me as the county manager. I have been absolutely forthright in how I am managing this county and how I am using the funds. And I will continue to be forthright. And I will continue to work with council and provide them information. And I will continue to work with the Controller and provide him information. I will continue to listen to county council members, the Controller, and the people in the audience who are offering sound suggestions. Because that's how we advance Luzerne County. And that's what I want to do.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo.
Mr. Chair, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two comments. One is the fact that Manager Crocamo gave that information to the local newspaper was that she wanted to make it public and wanted everybody to know about it, so that there was no secrecy. Secondly, I don't know about the rest of council, I know very little about Ms. Rozelle's love life. And, and I want to add that, I want to add that council has nothing to do with hiring employees of these departments, including that department. We have nothing to do with hiring anybody. So, you could ask away all the questions about that hire, but nobody here sitting on council had anything to do with that hiring. Now, other people in the administration might have hired someone, but that's all I wanted to comment on.
And I do want to add, and I want to applaud council because there is not a member on council who has reached out to me and said, you have to hire this person. Not once. And they should be applauded and respected for that. And I, I thank all, each and every one of you.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo. And just, Mr. LaScavitch?
I just want to say that I think every penny that Mary Rozelle received, she deserves. We had budgets on time, we had correct numbers, and you can go on and on. And in the past, it was never that way. We were scrambling all the time. That's not what we do today. And we can thank her for that. And there's another thing that you can say too. When somebody does a fantastic job, plus she did other jobs within the county that nobody's aware of. Took them on, went about her business, and didn't say a word. You know what that is? That's a great employee. That's somebody that you want on your team that will go the extra mile. And that's that person, and in my opinion, she deserves everything she gets.
Thank you, Mr. LaScavitch. And just to add to the, the comments about transparency, I, I think that, you know, this council and the previous council that I sat on while Manager Crocamo was here really has been night and day as far as transparency is concerned. You know, I, I've heard the stories from previous council members when other, other managers were present. I, I witnessed it myself when Manager Robertson was here. And, and I, you know, I hate to, to blame him for a lot of, some of the things that went wrong. But there were six months that the county was really going backwards because nothing was being shared with council. I was the vice chair at the time, nothing was being shared with me, nothing was being shared with our chair. There was no accountability in a lot of these offices, and things were going wrong left and right. And as we know, some of the things that went wrong were, were very public and, and very well-reported, not just locally, but nationally. So, as we try to get past all of that, we all understand here at this table, Manager Crocamo, the administration, and the Controller too, that we need to work together. And when we disagree about things, we can talk about them. We can talk about them in public. You know, we, we feel free to bring them up in public. Sometimes, I prefer to say, hey, listen, I, I don't agree with this, and I, I'd rather have a phone call about it and see if we can resolve it where we can make it work for everybody and make it work well for the taxpayers. But everyone's free to do that. Everyone's free to make that phone call or to say what they want to say in public. And I think that we really have a good working group of people here right now. To say that there are secrets and there's all this secrecy in the county really is not, not accurate. It's just, it's just, to me, it's purposeful disinformation. And, and I really, really don't appreciate it from anybody because we try really hard, like I said, to let the people know that, that we're doing the right thing. And that we're trying, we're trying every single day. And like I said, you can go and you can look at our documents, you can look at our budget. You can find out what we're doing and what we're spending money on. And every time that we have to make budget transfers and budget changes, it happens right here in front of everybody. All right? If you look back and you remember what happened with the commissioners, I want you to tell me whether it's night and day, because it truly is. Next up, we have Vivian Kreidler-Lacina, and then we'll go back to Mr. Granteed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Vivian Kreidler-Lacina from Nescapack Township. I'm another one with the tax increase. There has to be a way, the homestead was taken away from us years ago. It was great the last few years, we didn't have a tax increase. But it seems like every three years, we get a tax increase, and people, we just can't afford it. There has to be a way. I hear people saying about talking, looking at Lackawanna's budget and all that. How about taking a look at Philadelphia and, and Pittsburgh? I know they're a little bit bigger than we are, but we're, we're a pretty big area. How they give a tax break to the elder, to the elderly, I think it's over 60. You don't pay any property tax anymore. You don't pay school taxes because you paid so much into it, and they realize you're on a fixed income. Here's an example. We got a $20 increase in social security this year. And the first thing Medicaid did was they took $25, $15 to increase our insurance. And then the electric goes up, and this goes up. Now, you just want to talk, a councilman wants to put a 1% increase. Now, even if it starts next year, you introduce a 1% increase, social security gives us our raise, and maybe that raise is only 1.5. And Medicare's going to tack another $15 on, and then you're going to take the rest of it. How do the elderly get ahead? They're not entitled to food stamps. If they are, they're entitled to either between $20 to $36 a month, that's it. Have you calculated the food prices in stores right now? How does an elderly person not only pay their household bills, pay their insurance on their homes, pay the taxes on their homes, buy food to keep alive? Some of these people are just two steps away from eating cat food. But I, all I keep hearing is raising taxes, and it's not just, it's not just in the county, it's everywhere. Everybody wants a piece of the pie, everybody wants to raise everything. But then they cut your medical in half to where you can't even get a pair of hearing aids if you need them. I, I, I mean, it, it's, it's insane. We have to look at a way, bring the homestead back, help people out. Give the elderly a tax break. You know, give, if they're disabled and elderly at a certain age, give them a tax break. Don't raise their taxes. There has to be a way. And I know, I believe it was Mr. LaScavitch that last year or the year before, to get that 2.99 tax, he went through the county and found all this money and was able to say, hey, we don't need to raise the taxes. All these funds are here, there's so many different accounts that you have. And I know it's early, we won't know till fall what the taxes will be. But we need to take a look at everything. We need to, you know. We need to, you know, fix the roads, fix the bridges. You know, as you said, the one person's a very good employee. Well, let's look at those employees and see if we can, and I'm sorry to say, see if we can cut some, how would you say, red flows in the county and give somebody three or four jobs to do instead of just one job.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vivian. Sorry, your time expired.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Grantied?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that before, but it's the first time I'm doing this. I have a suggestion. We have warehouses from Hazelton to Scranton filled with workers who are not American citizens. They come here and they enjoy the things that were built before they got here without having to have ever invested in them. There must be a way that we can have the businesses put a surcharge on each one of them to to add to the tax base and ease the burden on American citizens and Pennsylvanians who are overtaxed. I don't know why we don't look at things like that. These businesses are making a fortune displacing American workers. These families, and I have nothing against these families, you know, if they come here the right way and they do the work and they want to live a better life, and I have nothing against that. But they're being taken advantage of, and when they're taken advantage of, it hurts Pennsylvania's workers, and somehow we have to put a surcharge on their labor to even the field with Pennsylvania workers so that they're not displaced so easily. I don't know if that's within your power to do anything like that, but I think that that's a place we need to start looking. There's got to be, you know, 20, 30, 40,000 workers in Luzerne County, and I don't know what kind of taxes they pay here. But they shouldn't be able to come here and enjoy what was built before them without having to pay some kind of a premium to be here. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Grantied. That's not within Luzerne County Council's power. Anybody else for public comment? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 7:22. We'll restart at 7:30.
Recording stopped.
Council members, it's 7:30. Please take your seats. We'll get started here in a minute. All right, council members. All right, council members, we're going to get started with the work session here. 7:32. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm sorry. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage? Mr. Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Before we begin, just this is in relation to number six. You'll notice the flash drives on your desks. They have the repository properties in them. I'm very happy they gave me purple, my favorite color, so. All right. We'll get. I could, I don't know if you can tell, the purple's my favorite color, the amount of times I wear it, but.
The green, my favorite.
There you go. Anyway. There you go. Starting off with number one, receive and discuss manager reports for December 2024.
First, I want to welcome Megan Stone. Welcome to the jungle.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to thank council for their support. You have the manager's report as always. If you have any questions, you can ask me here, send me an email, text message, phone, and I will be more than happy to answer those questions. I do want to say 2024, I think, was a really good year for the county. We are absolutely moving in the right direction, and I look forward to 2025 to be even, even better. I want to remind people, we should be proud of Luzerne County. We've been through a lot. And we have come out on the other end with the sun shining, and we have a very, very bright future. And it's even brighter if we all work together. And I'm going to continue that. I've worked very well with this council. I look forward to working even closer with council. I'm going to initiate some programs where council and department heads are matched up, and so that we can have a really robust and mighty workforce and goals. Not the dogs, I would have, not the dogs, I would have, the dogs that I wanted, so.
Over 5,400.
5,400 licenses. We'll have the debt paid off by the end of this year.
Just in a month of December. A lot of canines.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with the Master's Touch for printing of real estate tax bills.
Mary Rozell, please come to the podium.
Hello. Okay, we RFP the tax bill printing services. It's a contract that we have obviously to print all of our tax bills for Luzerne County. The contract is for 161,800 bills. The RFP, there were three responses with the person, with the company that we've chosen, the Master's Touch, the company that we're recommending, I should say. We're going to be saving 3.4 cents a bill. They are also going to be able to do a better job for us as far as verifying addresses, because a lot of times, you know, if the addresses are incorrect, we get those returned, and then we have to keep emailing the tax bill. So they have a system by where they can match those up and then send us a report, so actually we can correct that going forward, which is really helpful. We don't have that now, so. In addition to saving the 3.4 cents, we're also getting some additional services added. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one question about the addresses. Is there, is there any way that they could possibly work with our GIS department on, on anything like that, where they can, they can verify the addresses through them and maybe, I don't know what the service, like the service fee for that type of thing is?
We, we can check with them. We can check with them. I mean, they have a system that they use. And I don't know if it's, if it can interface, but I know that they did tell us, which again is different from everybody else, that they'll send us a report, so we don't keep having those same addresses. You know, like coming out, like currently, we don't get anything like that, so whatever falls out, then we just have to keep mailing them, you know, and I mean, we get the right address and we mail them, but they don't send us a list to correct it, but we'll, we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good idea.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, number three, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with UPMC Western Psychiatric Hospital for evaluations of participants and caregivers in the Luzerne County Juvenile Wellness Court.
Okay, we're already on. In September of 2024, we received a $730,000 grant to expand our juvenile wellness treatment court. Part of that grant, I should start by saying that grant period for the 730 was, just checking my dates, October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2028. Part of that grant requires a multifaceted evaluation program to assure that people are actually improving and getting the treatment that we want them to receive and getting the outcomes that we expect. So we are proposing that county council authorize the approval of a four-year contract to, with UPMC to do that evaluation of the participants. This is zero county match. And what it does is it locks us into a price rather than increasing each year. And again, this contract would be for the grant period only.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Fox, you always seem to have good news when you come.
Yeah, I'm always bringing money. I'm not taking money.
I noticed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, Ms. Fox, thank, good to see you as always. So is this grant specifically for, for this, or can, can we apply this grant in other areas?
This grant is specific to the treatment of the, for the juveniles involved in the wellness court. So aside from the evaluation piece, this will go directly to direct care for the youth involved. And then, you know, portion to probation and things like that. But it is very specific on the spend.
It's very specific. I see the proposal is very clear here. My only question, if there are other, if we have other items that need to be paid for, anything like in this realm? If perhaps we have the opioid settlement, that we could apply some of that, but I don't know if there's any other needs in the specific area where we can offset the funds. That's all in my concern.
Right, because not all the ju, like it's drug and alcohol, but not necessarily opiate related. So this is, we're paying for the mental health treatment, so those, the youth may be involved in drug and alcohol, but these services are specific to their mental health treatment, not their drug and alcohol treatment.
Totally separate.
Very good, thank you.
Just so that you're aware, the opioid settlement is not a grant, it's a settlement. And the uses have to meet the, what's called the Exhibit E, and that specifically sets forth the different programs that we can use. And Tara is absolutely right. If it's mental health and it's not related to any kind of opioid use, we can't use that money.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure we're clear about that, so thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Fox?
All right, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
And if any council members have any questions about the opioid settlement funds, you can read Exhibit E. It's online. Okay. Next up, we have the Luzerne Schoolkill Workforce Investment Board presentation.
You have a PowerPoint? Do you have a PowerPoint?
We do have a PowerPoint. I did bring extras for.
Okay, if you want to distribute them?
Oh, we have, do we already, we already have it in our packet? Okay, if any.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
And it's on the, on the backboard. Thank you very much for your kindness of inviting me to your meeting tonight. I thank Attorney Skeen and Manager Crocamo for meeting with me and arranging this presentation tonight. There are Zoom attendees. It's my board chair, Karen Kendredine is on the Zoom. We have my solicitor, Todd Truns, and Steve Tredinick. He's our Director of Accounting Services. In attendance with me is Trina Moss, my Deputy Director, and Board Member Michelle McKiddish, so thank you for joining tonight. If you go to the next slide. We were hoping that we'd be able to present a video tonight. It's 2.26 minutes, and I know, I don't believe we have the capability here, but it summarizes what a local workforce board does. And it's like, what, what is the capability? A board is a formal group of community leaders with memberships from the private sector, from education, economic development, and the community who serve in the city, in a county, a region, or identify, or in the community, I'm sorry, serve local job market. The local boards oversee the One Stop Centers, and the One Stop Centers are PA Career Link in Pennsylvania. We have three centers in Wooksbury, Hazelton, and Potsville. We help businesses find qualified workers and to meet the business needs and future workforce needs, to help workers acquire the skills that they need for employment. The boards link between the region's workforce talent and employer's skill needs. We convene with industry sector, education partners, and we try to match the workforce with the skill set of businesses. Every board has a plan. You can view that on our website, and I have, it's in the packet. It sets priorities for workforce areas, workforce needs in the area and in the region. It's a broad range of issues, including wages, job losses, job access equity. We analyze data. We work with local businesses. We understand what the skills are most in demand occupations. Workforce boards use outcomes data to advise employers and policymakers and communities about approaches for success. Without workforce boards, local edu. I just cut out a little bit.
Okay, there you go.
And community stakeholders would have a strong voice to represent workforce needs. It is key to link our community to the future. So if you get a chance to please review the video, it, it gives a nice summary of workforce boards. If you would go to the next slide, please. This is a map of local workforce boards in Pennsylvania. There's 23, and you'll see that Luzerne Schoolkill is, is a part of that. The Governor of Pennsylvania designated the Luzerne Schoolkill workforce area. This was done many, many years ago before my tenure. The Governor's Office is the lead interagency that administers the funding to all the boards in Pennsylvania. The Workforce Act is a federal law. It's called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Workforce funds help youth, adults, dislocated workers, and businesses within our community. The funding supports the public workforce system, known as Pennsylvania Career Link, with free services to all these individuals. The workforce programs help match dislocated workers with open job vacancies and offer skills training for better wages and employment opportunities in our area. To give you an idea of 2025, it's not a written and stone number. The USDOL is dedicating $122 million to Pennsylvania for workforce. The governor, not the governors, the USDOL budget is two, about $2 billion. The Luzerne Schoolkill Workforce Board has an anywhere between $8 and $10 million annual budget. Next slide, please. The Luzerne Schoolkill Board oversees the Pennsylvania Career Link comprehensive centers. And like I said, we have two in Luzerne County, one in Wooksbury, one in Hazelton, and we have one in Schoolkill County, Potsville. We are the fiscal recipient and responsible. The board is the fiscal recipient of, of the funding, and we are responsible for the $8 to $10 million annually. And it helps citizens and businesses in our area. For the past 15 years, I have been employed for the board, and we have a clean, unmodified, independent audit because of our transparency and our, and our internal control policies. I want to make it aware that the county elected officials do appoint my board members. Thank you. Next slide, please. Wanted to give you a snapshot of what took place in 2024. You'll see job postings, served employers. We've spent $411,000 on on-the-job training that gives a new individual into a job. Will pay 50% of their wages for a training period, so it reimburses the employer. Classroom training, $1.4 million. We helped people elevate their skill sets to get better jobs. You'll see the labor force. You'll see the top 10 employers. I do want to point out something that just happened recently, and you've probably heard it in the news. Giorokey Beverage in Pittston Township, formerly known as, you probably are more familiar with, the Coca-Cola plant. They abruptly laid off all their staff, and there's about 200 to 226 individuals that were without employment as of January 1st. Our office is working with the Department of Labor, and we are, we, we are planning. You can share them.
I don't mean to interrupt you, ma'am. I, Manager Crocamo, do you know the county is going to send somebody to that event?
Not that I'm aware of, but we can and we will.
That's okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Participate in that.
It's, it's open to whomever.
We do have like 200 job openings here, so. We could use.
Very good.
Well, I don't know if this is going to be part of the presentation, but we did reach out to Career Link, and Jim Rose is going to follow up so that we can have a relationship. I know they can help us, and we can help them, so.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Next slide, please. I'm here to talk about agreements that are mandated by the workforce law. We are looking for a partnership with the chief elected officials in both counties. These mandated agreements are per USDOL and PA DOL policy. There are programs, you know, our programs are highly regulated. It's not that we can just use that $8 to $10 million for just anything. We have monitors. We have to report to the government. We have monitors that come into our office that do desk files. The agreements are requirements, and it will benefit Luzerne and Schoolkill County for the continuation of funding. This year, Pennsylvania updated their policies internally, which in turn, I have to update the policies with the board and elected officials. I want to say that Schoolkill County is part of the workforce area. We were able to meet with them in November, and they have agreed to sign the documents. I've historically received between $8 and $10 million.
Oh, great.
And it's based on population.
Great, so we're doing better than most.
So in more rural areas, it's, it's less.
Great, that's good. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could, Mr. Chair. Hey, Ms. Lan, welcome. Welcome back again, ladies as well. I know in the past Luzerne County has not always approved of the budget for the, for the group web. Has, has that policy changed? I'm seeing here, we're looking at three documents, which I think we have approved in the past, but I don't know if, if, what you're talking about, the state policies have changed.
I still request local elected officials' approval of my budget, and thus far, Schoolkill County has approved the budget, but that is, that, that policy is still in place.
When can we expect that? Is, what's, is that the, like the state budget cycle? Is that before July 1st?
It's before July 1st.
Expect that? Okay, very good. Again, I really believe in, in Career Link and the web, so thanks for your participation.
Thank you.
Ms. Lescavage?
I'm just curious if there's any part-time jobs available at Colville Lennox's Cabassi Shop in Shenandoah.
I can't say that offhand. Maybe we could ask that question for our staff at the Career Link.
Any, any other questions from council members?
I just have a question about the resolution, so this appoints.
Yeah, so this, the resolution is number five in your packets, council members.
It appoints council members to do what?
It'll appoint a council member that will be the, the, whatever's defined as the chief elected official in the, basically, is that the council representative on the, on the board?
It would be council representative that you all agree to that would be able to sign documents, because we, we consistently work with local elected officials because of requirements that I mandated for signatures. Could be a local plan. It could be.
Understood.
An agreement on. There's several agreements that.
What's the, what's the level of participation that this council member would have to perform? Is it something that's just really like signing documents, or is it something where they attend meetings, they?
It's all of the above. You could attend meetings. You're, you're welcome. We have sunshine meetings once a month. We have quarterly meetings, and we welcome your attendance and participation.
Are they located all in the same place, or are they in different areas of the area?
We advertise to, to have the meetings at 32 East Union Street, which is the Wooksbury Career Link, but we also offer Zoom.
Okay. Any other questions by council members? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Lan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was number four. And, and five, since we discussed the resolution. Finally, we have number six, discussion regarding the resolution approving the sale of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, acting as the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau. Who are we? Who are we waiting for on that? There's nobody.
Nobody's here from Elite Revenue, but you have the list, and when you go through the list, if there's questions, obviously, you can send that, them to Elite. Elite is very responsive.
Okay, all right. Any other questions about that? Okay, we'll move into public comment now. Are there any comments in the audience? Any comment in the audience? Mr. Burton?
Greg Griffin, Swarazville. I want to comment real quick on the number six agenda item regarding resolution approving the sales of certain parcels of property held, county property. So yeah, it's, you know, we have to, the county has to get out of the real estate business. All real estate has to be sold, even, even if for a dollar. Get it back on the tax rolls, and there are some, there are probably some properties that could probably be sold for housing, because we have an extremely, you know, shortage of houses, but I, you know, I applaud the Real Estate Committee and council for trying to dispose of these properties. And you know, a lot of them are just like a side lot, and somebody wants to enlarge their backyard in the non-buildable, so we, I understand that, but you know, the, there has to be some properties that the county can get rid of and get the back, get them back on the tax, tax rolls to lo, to lower the burden for the rest of the taxpayers. And I noticed we had to execute a contract with the Master's Touch for the printing of real estate tax bills. I know it's too late, but I want to center on the fact of the 10% penalty the county puts on citizens that do not pay their taxes in time. Now, I don't understand not paying their taxes in time. If the taxes are not really due to the end of, say, 2024, but they haven't paid it by August, they're getting a 10% penalty. Even though they're probably not in arrears until the end of 2024, so the taxes essentially are not due to the end of the year. Yet, it, it's a regressive fee. It's destructive. It's attacking those very citizens who have trouble paying the initial tax bill anyway, and then we put a 10% penalty on them. So council in the future, I know we're doing these tax bills now. It's too late to remove the 10% fee, even if you all did vote on it. But for next year, just food for thought, if council wants to do something to help the people, remove this 10% penalty. It, it was removed during COVID for a period of time. So you can live without it. And again, my point is, you have to find new sources of revenue, not, not beating down the citizens who can barely pay their property taxes, let alone school taxes. So council, you know, people have elected you to find a way through this. And like I said, I helped get Breznerhan, McCormick, Pew, Jamie Walsh elected. I'm going to be leaning on them to bring some money back from Washington and the state, so I'm, I'm with yous. Got to get that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other, any other members of the audience for public comment? Mr. Griffith?
On the Master Touch contract, I think that's a great company to use. The company we currently use has had a lot of problems as auditor for the tax collectors. One of the biggest complaints I get from most of our tax collectors is the bills don't scan correctly. The data doesn't seem to be correct. Master Touch does a fabulous job on that, from what I understand. They're, they've been doing it for quite a while, and their bills scan very well. I reached out to a couple of tax collectors when I heard from Budget and Finance that they were thinking about this company and asked the question, like, what are your thoughts? And they said, anything better than what we're currently using is better than that, so. The council really seriously consider. I think that's a great idea to use Master Touch. The 10% penalty fee is Greg spoke about, Mr. Griffin spoke about. I think that's a great idea if we can do that for, for next year, or even, and I understand the reason for the 10%, is it's to encourage people to pay their taxes by the, the beginning of August. Gives them some incentive. So, and I don't know how cumbersome that would be for collections, but possibly think about if you pay it by a certain time, and 5% if you pay at a certain time, and then 10% of a certain time. It might be a little bit cumbersome for collection possible, possibility, but it might be a thought to try and think outside the box to try and give the taxpayers a little bit of a relief. In 2029, I wrote down, we're probably going to be almost tax debt-free. We might want to consider, hopefully the same members of council will still be here. We might want to consider doing a sinking fund for that $26 million for one year and leave that. We might want to consider doing a sinking fund for that $26 million for one year and leave that money set aside with regulation on it, that said it can only go towards tax, property tax relief. So that if we get to a place in a budget where we're short, we could take it from that $26 million and not have to do a tax increase. But it has to be restrictive only to property tax relief, so that we don't have council coming in here divvying in there and saying, well, we could just start giving out salary increases and all kinds of stuff because we have this pot of money here. So consider that for our 26, one time, instead of extending the debt to 2029, take it to 2030, put the $26 million in a sinking fund, get interest on it, put it in a mutual fund, whatever you need to do. And we can have that money aside for situations where we run into a place where taxes possibly. And that, I have written down here, tax rolls and delinquent taxes should be placed out for bid. I think we've discussed this with the Real Estate Committee. The ability for us to give property away $500, I know Mr. Lescavage brought this up as well. Maybe we could give a RFP out for a real estate company to come in and buy up all that stuff for, like we did, used to do for taxes at the time, for delinquent taxes. And they could give us money as a lump sum for a certain amount of property, and if they sell it, they can make a profit. If they don't sell it, then we got the money on the front end. Something to consider rather than giving it out that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? We have a hand up. Mr. Granteed.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm. With some of the information that I just got from, I'm not sure who, or who she was or who she represented. But she was talking about the former Coca-Cola employees that lost their job the first of the year. And I saw, and I saw the news feed on that, and it looked like most of the people who lost their jobs are not American citizens. And I want to know when Luzerne County Council is going to start representing American citizens and Pennsylvanians and Luzerne County citizens. It seems like the minute they lost their job, we're starting. When we have people in this county that don't have jobs, and I just don't think it's right that we concentrate on people who don't belong here in the first place and are probably going to have to leave very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else for public comment? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night. Happy New Year.